Welcome to the September 14, 2021 Oshkosh Common Council Meeting. Please call the roll.
Hanson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Wojciechowski.
Erickson.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Muglerower.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present six.
And Mr. Wojciechowski will be joining us in a few moments. Councilmember Hanson will lead us in the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask for guidance tonight as we begin this meeting. May all those who participate in our discussions and our decisions reflect the values that we cherish in this great city.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next on our agenda, we do have an introduction of our inaugural poet laureate, Mr. Thomas Cannon. And I believe Mr. Gilderson Dewey is here to make an introduction. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Jeff Gilderson Dewey. I'm the Director of the Oshkosh Public Library, and it is my great pleasure to introduce to you Oshkosh's first poet laureate, Thomas Cannon. Thomas Cannon has been instrumental in developing a writing community in Oshkosh for many years. Since helping to found the Oshkosh Area Writers Club in 2002, he has been an active member. He has helped bring writers and readers together through his work with the Lake Fly Writers Conference. He co-hosts the locally-produced cable show Author Showcase. Tom is currently a member of three area writing groups and has dozens of writing credits in fiction, nonfiction, and poetry. It is an honor to introduce Thomas Cannon as the first Oshkosh poet laureate.
Well done.
And I want to thank Jeff and Oshkosh Public Library. They really go above and beyond to support the writers in this community. And I want to thank the City of Oshkosh for creating this position. I don't actually believe that I'm the best poet in Oshkosh. I may not even be the best poet in this room, but I do believe that I'm a great fit for the role. Now, I didn't think so at first before I applied, but then I got to thinking, like, if a bit off like me can do poetry, people think that, then they're going to be inspired to do poetry. And I want to help people fully explore the therapeutic writing, the therapeutic power of writing a poem. And so, I am somewhat qualified to be a poet laureate. I have many poems published in journals, and I have many more that I want to write, publish, and arrange into chapbooks. And you heard my dedication to the writing community in Oshkosh, and I really want to grow there. And I want to work with the Oshkosh Public Library and explore poetry with people. But when Mayor Paul Mary spoke of this role, the poet laureate, is to be that of healing our divides, such as Amanda Gorman's poem in the Biden inauguration, I was like, oh my, wow. But that's a great goal, and I'm going to work towards that. And despite reading the comments on the Facebook page, "You know you're from Oshkosh," I believe that we can grow closer. Poetry is a great tool for that. And so, I would like anybody who has thoughts on poetry, on what the idea of what a poet laureate should be, anybody who wants to share their own poetry, to join a Facebook group that I created, Oshkosh Poet Laureate. This is a quick poem, because I actually just picked this out tonight, because this kind of shows the impact that Oshkosh has on me, and inspired this poem, particularly one person, of music and dancing. After the silence, the two-person polka band began to play. In that way, she spoke of music and dancing on plywood dance floors, under tents, and of herself. Her old friends sang with fading voice, but Dolores refused a solemn occasion. How great thou art came only after hoop-dee-doo. Music filled the funeral home, slow, constant sound, persistent backbeat, following chords, honest, unspoken words moved heel to toe in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I'd also like to thank the members of the selection committee for the time and effort that, and care that they put into reviewing the applications. And thank you, Mr. Cannon, for applying, and welcome. We're excited. Save the date. I believe we have a virtual reception planned in early November, late October. I can't recall the date that's tentatively planned.
November 4th, I believe.
November 4th, yes, yes. Thank you for that. And those library staff that are working so diligently on planning that, so thank you. All right, next, we have a presentation on the 2020 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report by Clifton Larson Allen.
My name is John Troutman. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen, a principal, lead principal for the external audit for 2020. And tonight really is just kind of a brief overview, 10, 15 minutes, just going through the annual financial report, going through the financial statements, certainly open up for any questions you may have or anything you want me to discuss with the audit for 2020. That's kind of the informal discussion tonight. So, if you're following along, I do have the, I will spend most of the presentation in the annual financial report, in the comprehensive annual financial report. I'll kind of call out some page numbers, but again, you don't have to follow along. I'm going to be speaking kind of at a higher level, just a summary level, with just going through the results of the City of Oshkosh 2020 audit. To start out, kind of start where the end, where the audit ended, which is the opinion. So, on page 13 is the independent auditor's report. That is the opinion that we attached to your financial statements for 2020. And we did issue a clean opinion, an unmodified opinion, so that's exactly what an external audit is designed to achieve, so that's good news. There is one emphasis of matter, and that is described in page 14, top of page 14, and that is the City recorded a prior period adjustments of $3,346,000 in the sewer utility and $9,611,000 in the redevelopment authority to reflect duplicate recording, historical recording of capital assets. So, again, just kind of cleaning up some things, the City was cleaning up some things there and correcting some fixed asset records. Our opinions are not modified in respect to that matter. So, again, great news. Your internal control throughout the year 2020 was able to function adequately to achieve an unmodified opinion, so that's always a good thing, and a testament to your finance director and your finance team to do that. So, again, very good news there. The next section of the report really goes through the management discussion and analysis, and that's really the city's document. And I always like to point that out to the council, because what that document is, is four or five pages of plain English of what happened during the year. So, this book is pretty big, a lot of pages, a lot of financial statements, a lot of complexities as far as auditing standards, but that's really four or five pages that sums up the changes. So, highly recommend that you read that, and also members of the public as well. What I want to talk about for the financial statements starts on page 26, and that is the balance sheet, the governmental funds balance sheet. We skipped a few pages there, which is the statement of net position, the government-wide. And again, what I wanted to focus on just for this presentation is the fund-level accounting, your budgetary basis accounting. So, you're already starting your budget process for 2022, so with that, we'll just kind of take a glance back at the end of 2020. So, page 26 goes through the balance sheet. So, you have your assets, your liabilities, your deferred inflows of resources for all of your major funds, and then an aggregate for all of your non-major funds in the fourth column there. So, I'll talk about each fund, really the bottom line for the fund balance. So, again, assets minus liabilities is fund balance. That's the fund balance you carried over into the 21-year we're in right now. So, if you're following along, that's the bottom subtotal.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Mr. Barney, could you come up and join the citizens up front here? That area is for staff.
Yeah. Chief Speaker, Chairman, or the chair?
Oh, thank you so much. All right.
Is he here or up here?
Just up here somewhere. Please continue, sir.
Thank you. So, what, as I was saying, what I want to talk about is really the fund balances, which is the carryover, that's your reserve that you carried over into the 2021 year we're in right now. The leftmost column, a general fund, is your main operating fund of the city, so we take a look at that. That's $17,195,000, you have total fund balance. There are three categories of that fund balance. Non-spendable, $220,000 is not available to the city. $43,000 of that $17 million is assigned for various purposes. Again, you've earmarked those funds. And then the rest is unassigned, and unassigned is a very important number. That's the number of unassigned, really, reserve that you ended 2020 with and started 2021, $16,931,000. Now, oftentimes, when you go out for bonding, when you're really judging the health of municipal accounting, you look at that number and you divide that into your expenditures. You do that for one reason, to get a percentage. Percentages are relative, are non-relative across sizes, so when you have various-sized cities and various-sized municipalities across the country, dollar amounts are very relative. So, what, $17 million or $16,900 for your city, maybe very high for another city, maybe very low for a larger city. So, when you divide it into your expenditures, it gives you kind of an assessment of how much reserve you have. Your percentage, take $16 million into your expenditures, is about 37, 35 to 40 percent, 37 percent of your expenditures. Again, 15 to 25 is really that low floor. You want to have above that. Anything above that is considered very healthy. Again, that will be affected in your bond rating, one of the elements that's affected in your bond rating, so that would improve your bond rating when it comes time to do that, as you do that every so often. So, again, good news there. As you take a look at that, and as you're looking at the 22 budget, that's a good kind of benchmark of where you started 21. The rest of those funds, you have an additional $124,000 in fund balance of debt service. You have additional $5,243,000 in special assessment improvement. Now, as I said, that fourth column is an aggregate column. It's a subtotal column that subtotals all of your non-major funds in the back of the financial statements. So, you have additional $5,243,000 there. I'm sorry, $48,000, $48,28,000 in non-major. So, total citywide governmental funds, fund balance, $70,591,000. So, if you turn a couple pages to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, page 28, you'll see that this shows how you got there. So, we kind of looked at a point in time, December 31, 2020, but this shows an income statement, so this shows how you got there, from the beginning of the year. So, if you start on the bottom, you'll see the fund balances, January 1, 2020, and then you'll see those fund balances we just talked about. And everything above there is all your revenues, all of your expenditures by function, so you can see the various revenues and function by source, and then the expenditures of how you spent your budget in 2020. So, you can see the middle of the page there, revenues exceeded expenditures in the general fund by $1,782,000. You had a transfer in and transfer out, netting to $956,000, and that made up your change in fund balance in the general fund, $2,739,148. Debt service had a reduction in net change in fund balance, $2,065,000. And of course, that happens as you spend down your fund balance. Again, this is, fund balance is a timing issue, it's a point in time. So, you can see you started the year with $2 million. That was an intentional amount that you anticipated in spending on debt service in 2020. So, then now your fund balance is down to $124,000. Special assessment, again, net change in fund balances, revenues minus expenditures, $1,275,000. All of your non-major aggregate funds netted to a reduction of $158,000 in fund balance. So, again, you can see all of the beginning and ending fund balances there for the major and non-major funds of the city. And then the last statement I want to look at is on page 33, which is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. Might be a different page on yours, I'm not sure, 33, yep, 33. Those are your operating revenues and expenditures for your proprietary funds. And I always want to end on the proprietary funds, because we talked about the general fund, we talked about your major funds, your governmental funds. Those all follow the same accounting, really, procedures, and that's modified accrual accounting. This part of the city, the business-type activities, the proprietary funds, they follow a different, they follow full accrual. They're called business-type activities by definition, they're much like a business, so they follow full accrual accounting, they have depreciation, they have expenditures that are accrued on an accrual basis. So, again, we look at the income statement when we look at proprietary funds, because they're designed to fund their expenditures by user fees. So, the general fund and governmental funds are designed, by definition, to set a budget and fund it by revenues and tax levy, whereas this is in, by design, your charges for services and your operating revenues are designed to fund those. So, as we look at that, we have four major enterprise funds and one non-major enterprise fund. You have transit utility, water utility, sewer utility, and stormwater utility as your major enterprise funds, business-type activities, and then you have the, you're getting on-major funds. So, I'll just really go through the bottom line for each one of those, just to not get lost in the detail there, there's a lot of detail on that page. Change in net position, $142,000 in your transit utility, bringing the net position to $8,472,000. The water utility had a change in net position of $3,251,838, bringing net position to $77,43,435. Sewer utility had a change in net position of $3,500 and $385,000, and that brought net position to $73,176,781. Stormwater ended the year with a change in net position of $4,711,534, bringing their net position $60,639,712. Now, your non-major, your aggregate, brought an additional, it shows a decrease of $252,903, which brought that fund, that net position, sorry, $16,431,968. So, all said and done, total proprietary funds in the city, ending net position $235,764,497. So, again, that gives you a snapshot of the income statement, how you got there, your various operating revenues and operating expenses. I always like to point out that the page after that, the cash flow statement, really kind of, this kind of takes away the accrual part of that. So, a lot of times, the full accrual accounting gets a little bit complicated. This cash flow statement takes all that away and says, how much cash did you bring in? How much cash did you take out? By itself, each one of these statements does its job in reporting. I highly recommend you kind of put them all together in making analysis of how they're doing, and that's what the city does, that's what city management does when they take a look at this. Any other areas of the audit you want me to talk about? I'd be happy to do that. The rest of the document is really a bunch of footnotes and a bunch of other schedules and statistical schedules. We could literally talk for hours on all this stuff, but that's probably not in anybody's best interest. So, again, I'd be happy to talk about anything, any questions you may have about the audit in general.
Counsel, any questions? All right, no, I think we're good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we will move on to a public hearing this evening. Resolution 21-451, approved final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract number 21-21. That's for Olson Avenue from Vinland to Zion Street, Anderson Street from Farmington Avenue to 250 north of Olson Avenue, Zion Street from Olson Avenue to 250 feet north of Olson Avenue. Do we have anyone registered for the public hearing?
No, we do not.
Okay, take a motion, I'm sorry, I'll read this three times. Resolution 21-451, approved final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract number 21-21. Second call for public input. Third and final reading, 21-451, approved final resolution for special assessments for asphalt overlay relating to contract number 21-21. All right, counsel, we'll take a motion in a second.
Don't move.
Second discussion on the public hearing. All right, seeing none, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Muglerower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, next, we will move on to citizen's statements to council, and citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electioneering. I understand we have some folks registered, PM?
We have one individual registered for citizen's statements, William Barney.
Mr. Barney, can you come up here to this microphone over here? And again, I just remind you that citizen's statements are five minutes and must address items not listed on the agenda. There you go.
Okay, well, first thing I want to mention is, I should have a mask, one of those shields, because I have a breathing issue. I've been on oxygen for almost two years, and these things are hard to breathe in. I just wondered if next time something comes up, somebody else or me could have a shield to talk through, you know, because these things, it's hard to breathe. And I'm best off when I sit down and I'm standing up, so maybe it'll take another 45 minutes.
Well, Mr. Barney, could you please state your address?
1436 West Second Ave., Oshkosh, Wisconsin, 54902.
Thank you, and you may begin.
Okay, well, I have a lot of issues about the, about the Oshkosh Police Department. I've had many encounters, I had about 78 encounters, and I've never been a guilty person. I'm not the criminal on these, not one of them. And the first time, the police officer came over to my house, and I complained about this kid throwing rocks at me, throwing mostly sticks, apples, once or while a stone, and he was throwing stuff at me for 20 minutes, this kid. And the reason he did that, there's a fence between me and his side where his family lives down a little bit ways. Well, he came over, because he started calling me some names, because I like to play with the kids. So, he gave me some kind of off, off, offword kind of name about a kid, a man that abuses kids. And I asked him why, why he called me that, and he said, because you are. He said, you know, the kind of name I'm thinking of, most people think of a child molester, something like that, you know? Well, these kids I happen to love. I mean, I go to the store and I buy these kids, still all kinds of stuff at that Dollar Tree. And every time I see a lady with a kid, I tell her to go to the Dollar Tree to get some stuff for the kids, because they got a thousand kids, things they have for kids. Well, this officer comes over and he says, do you have a witness? And there's a witness, yes, she's right there. So, he goes to her and gets this report, and he comes to me, and he says, what happened? And I says, well, some things, and he didn't write it down. And he was going to write down the report, and he put it down in his pocket and decided not to take my report. Well, he took the witness's report, but he wouldn't take my report. I don't know why. I asked him, why don't you write down my report? Why didn't you take down my report? What do I get? Just another ignorance, wouldn't answer me, so after a while, you know, you just kind of pass on to the next thing. Well, okay, he didn't take a report, and I started talking to him, and I started getting kind of mad. Why do I get mad? Because I don't get some good answers. I don't get any kind of work that he should do. So, I get mad, I get mad now. That's how I get, when he doesn't do some things that he's supposed to do. Why does he treat me with disrespect? And then I said to him about things, what are you, what are you going to say to the kid? Maybe I can help you say something too. Who knows everything? Only God knows everything. Only God can answer you every question you ask. He can answer you. Think a police officer can? Hell no, it's a big job, to being a police officer. You know how big of a job that is? That's authority. That's like on the next road to a teacher, to a congressman, to a representative. Some of these cops, they got authority. They can do almost anything they want. They can bring up something if they want. You got to prove it. If a cop says something, you got to listen to him. He's authority. But, well, anyway, I'm kind of excited.
Mr. Barney, you have one more minute, okay?
Can I have some more time, please? I got lots of things to talk. I had six, seven, eight encounters with police officers, ma'am.
Wait, one moment. Mr. Barney, one moment, let me consult with counsel. Counsel, would you like to give more time?
I just started. I can finish any questions.
One moment.
I think five minutes is fine.
I believe we did provide you earlier before the meeting with the complaint form that you were looking for.
Right, right. Ma'am, I got.
Mr. Barney.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, you've had your time, counsel.
Do I get five more minutes, please? Please, can I have five more?
We're going to give you one more minute.
One minute? Why can't I have five? What's wrong with that?
One more moment.
Five minutes isn't long?
Mr. Barney.
Oh, come on.
We have another person registered to speak.
Honest to God, I tell you, I had six and seven encounters with these guys. I got something to say about each one of these encounters. You give me four, five minutes to talk, honest to God, all I'm asking is five more minutes? Don't tell me I'm one minute, I can't even answer my question. I answered one question. He didn't, he didn't even write down the report that I had to say. That's just one question I asked, and one answer, I answered that question. What does he say to me next? He says, you tried to tell me my job? He puts his pants up. Oh, I'm sorry, I did, I'm just trying to ask you if I can help you so I can get this kid to stay away from me. The kid comes over again, and five o'clock later, in the middle of the night, and he busts up my place. I says, I called the police officer again. I says, hey, can you come over here? I'm scared of this kid. I've been in jail, I know bad people when I see them. This kid's awful brave. He came over my house in the middle of the night. He don't have a dad.
Mr. Barney, okay.
Well, how come I can't even finish? Five minutes? Come on. I got to my dog. Okay? Right. I need more paper than this, right? I got my dog. I can't say that, no. I'm not trying to make a problem. I'd just like to say something, man. I'd like to speak my mind, at least twenty minutes. My God.
All right, we have public comment on agenda items next, and I believe we have someone registered, Mr. Pollard.
We have several individuals registered for item number 11, resolution 21-456. Our first speaker is going to be Kevin Pollard.
Mr. Pollard? Yes, if you could come right up here. And we'll just note here for the record that we did receive an email with some attachments from Mr. Pollard that will be entered into the record. Please go ahead. There you go.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Pollard. I represent SBA Structures. SBA is the owner of an existing cell tower that's located approximately.
If you could speak into the mic a little more.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, SBA owns an existing structure, which is located approximately 500 feet from the site of the new tower that's being proposed, and this tower has been in place since at least 2006, and AT&amp;T is currently a tenant on the existing tower. So, this, we object to the pending application, which has been filed by Harmony Towers seeking to construct a new tower approximately 500 feet away. The reason for our objection is because under state statute, an applicant seeking to construct a new tower is required to do. a new tower is required to do several things, including, one, evaluate the feasibility of co-location on an existing site, and also, two, establish evidence of economic burden as a reason for needing to construct a new tower. And I submitted today a written letter from Kent Meyer of SBA Communications. Mr. Meyer is the local site manager in the state of Wisconsin, and in the letter dated September seventh, he's indicating that no one from AT&amp;T has ever contacted him about issues with the site, whether it's related to rent or any technical issues, and in fact, they recently updated the lease with an amendment. And the other submission is a radio frequency comparison showing essentially substantially the same coverage from either site. And so the reason for our objection is, I mean, yes, we understand that companies have the right to compete, and they can build a new tower, however, this is a regulated industry, and they're required to follow the regulations. And they haven't complied with the regulations because they haven't evaluated whether it's feasible to remain co-located on the existing tower. The reason for the regulations is to avoid unnecessary pollution of airspace and duplicative towers, and so, you know, you don't end up with competing cell towers stacking towers right next to each other. So our position is that the applicant hasn't complied with the state statute, and that's the reason for our objection. Happy to answer any questions.
Do other council members have questions? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Actually, just one question, since your objection centers around regulation. The regulation that you're somewhat specifying, is it a shall or is it a may?
What do you mean?
Well, when we adjudicated the first part of this last fall, I think it was, if my memory serves me correct, part of state statute allows the applicant to do certain things, but also in terms of the approvals we give and the oversight that we have, there's may issues that we have to do, and then there's shall that we can do. Are they required that they have to do the due diligence that you're talking about? And then if the outcome equals X, that they have to stay with you? Or is it just that they're required to do that, and no matter the outcome, they can still choose to not go with your service?
So the applicant is required to provide an affidavit stating that it's, quote, economically burdensome to remain co-located, or to co-locate on an existing site. And so they've been on this tower, they've never, you know, and they file an affidavit with the city saying it's economic burden, however, they've never even contacted to request any modification to the rent. So it's kind of, they're bypassing an important part of the purpose of the statute. I mean, there's no reason, I mean, so that's where the requirement comes in. And then the city is able to deny the application on that ground. And I think part of my objection to, you know, the plan commission's recommendation is it's, you know, they appear to be under the understanding that they're required to approve these applications as long as they comply with certain, basically the building code. And that's, I mean, that's not true, because the statute specifically permits the city to deny it on that basis. Thank you.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Where are they at with their FCC process? Do you know where they're at with that? I mean.
As far as the new tower?
Yeah, the new tower.
That wouldn't be a question for me, I'm not sure as far as where that is.
Okay, all right. Lynn, any?
This would be planning, so.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Lyons, and then if I could ask Councilmember Ford, do you recall, or maybe Mark can answer this, whether findings affect by plan commission on this? Okay.
So, Councilmember Miller's question, yes, we do have a copy of their FCC approval.
Okay, and so the feds have approved this?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And any problems with the state before it ends up on our desk here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Other questions by council of gentlemen? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Jim Germain.
Mr. Germain, if you could join us up front here, please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Jim Germain, my address is N four-two seven-two Sleepy Hollow Road in Cambridge, Wisconsin. I work for AT&amp;T in our Madison office. I've actually been with AT&amp;T for a little over thirty-four years. I've seen quite a bit of change in our industry. In fact, we all have these little devices in our pockets. When I started in the company, we referred to them as car phones. Some of you might be nodding, maybe around long enough to remember those days, but back then, they cost several thousand dollars and cost probably about two dollars a minute to speak to somebody on the phone. And obviously, back then, you didn't talk very long, you made your calls very quick. Well, nowadays, we don't even think about picking up our phone and calling long distance, and never even thinking about what that cost. In fact, most of the time, it's unlimited, it's included in there. And really, what's changed? Well, in a word, competition. When cellular service was first introduced in nineteen eighty-three, there at most were two providers, and, you know, each kind of had their area, and you had a choice as to who you were going to go with, one or the other. Nowadays, you think about how many providers are out there, and, you know, it's certainly provided more functionality, more features, newer devices, and certainly it's driven down cost. Well, when it comes to towers, it's really no different. Competition in the tower space is incredibly important to our business in keeping costs down. The more competition we have, the better it is for consumers. And when you take a look at the cost of wireless service, one of the major components is space on a tower. The other thing that's so important is the ability to upgrade our equipment. As you can imagine, over the years, there's been enormous change in our wireless service. We talk about, you know, now you hear 5G, well, 4G wasn't that long ago, 3G. Obviously, we started out with 1G, so we've gone through an enormous amount of change. And with that comes change in equipment. And in order to be able to upgrade the equipment, we need to have the flexibility in those arrangements to be able to swap out the equipment. That makes it better for customers. The faster we can bring new technology, the better off they are. The other thing I'll just add is AT&amp;T has had the privilege and the honor to serve as the U.S. FirstNet provider across the country. FirstNet, if you're not familiar with it, came out of the nine-eleven commission. It was a recommendation that the nation needed a nationwide network dedicated to first responders. It was an RFP put out, AT&amp;T was selected for that, we're very honored to be in that position, and having the ability to upgrade that equipment on these towers, which this new arrangement we have gives us that ability to do that. So that's really why we're here today. I'll let Mr. Flowers and Mr. Jazz talk a little bit more about our tower proposal, but thank you for your time, happy to answer your questions.
Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, you know, as much as I do, I like to root for the small guy, you happen to be the ten-hundred-pound gorilla in the room, but are you zoned, you're permitted, you're all set here, we're the last step in this process, so we're your only barrier?
Well, I'll let Mr. Flowers speak to that specifically, but that's my understanding, and I see him nodding, so I think that answer is yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Paul Jonas?
Yes, Mr. Jonas, welcome.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Sorry, we don't have a taller, I don't know if it's adjustable or not.
Can I take it out? You can hear me, all right? Speak up. My name is Paul Jonas, I am an attorney with Michael Best in Friedrich in Milwaukee. Do you want my address?
Yes, please.
I live at twenty, I just moved, twenty-four forty-five North Harding Boulevard in Wauwautosa, W-A-U, W, it's Wisconsin, you know how to spell it. So in my capacity as attorney, just want to touch on sort of one kind of, I'll call it practical point, and then a few legal points, somewhat building off of what we heard from Mr. Pollard a moment ago. So first of all, just a couple points of fact, and by the way, I represent Harmony Towers, the developer, not AT&amp;T, sorry, I should have clarified that. So first of all, with regard to any effort to renegotiate or consider an ongoing presence on the existing SBA tower, in fact, in the packet that we submitted with our zoning application, we included what we call a toss letter, which is a letter, it happens to be from AT&amp;T, which of course is driving this whole process, to SBA explaining that for a variety of economic and operational reasons, some of which Mr. Germain touched on, the continued presence of AT&amp;T on SBA's tower is not feasible, and so therefore, and this was dated, by the way, January twenty-third, twenty nineteen, the request was made to renegotiate the lease. And this letter, as you might imagine, was not unique to this particular tower, it was sent around the same time to many, many towers, because of course, these are very large companies, and these leases aren't negotiated on a one-off ad hoc basis, they're negotiated dozens, hundreds at a time. So it's not accurate to say that no effort has been made to renegotiate this lease or any other lease to come to terms that would make it feasible for AT&amp;T to remain on the tower. In fact, those conversations have been ongoing and continue to be ongoing at a high level between SBA and AT&amp;T. But in the meantime, AT&amp;T, and by extension, my client, Harmony, the tower developer, needs to continue to provide economic, functional, effective service to citizens of Oshkosh and places all over the country. And what we're having tonight is a conversation we have in lots of places, which is a situation where we've got a tower owner, often, if not almost always, SBA, trying to maintain, frankly, what is a monopoly, and their only argument, their only reason for being here is to keep another tower from being built that will allow the carrier to move, thereby saving literally millions of dollars, thus the economic burden. And by the way, with regard to this sworn affidavit, that's also in your packet. So to your question, there is a requirement under sixty-six oh four oh four that we comply, and we did. And there's also a supplementary letter, by the way, from Mr. Flowers to that same effect. So the reality is that we're here, Harmony and AT&amp;T are here, of course, as private companies to make money, we're not, no one would deny that. But as importantly, if not more importantly, we're here to provide that effective, cost-effective cell service that we need on an ongoing basis. And by the way, it's not just the lease payment, it's also, as Mr. Germain mentioned, the flexibility to easily, without having to go back and renegotiate the lease, swap out old equipment for new when these great new technologies come along. And these are the sorts of things that SBA has been extremely reluctant to do, which is why we're here. Because frankly, if all else equal, it's much easier to just stay on the existing tower than to go on a new tower. But that hasn't been the case, so here we are. I think that's all I have to say.
I was just going to say, you're right on time.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I'll take questions if there were any, obviously. Thank you.
All right, next.
Our final speaker is Andrew Flowers.
Yes, if you would, please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Andrew Flowers, I am the Senior Real Estate and Construction Manager for AT&amp;T. My address is fifty-nine oh five Fairview Avenue, Downers Grove, Illinois, six oh five one six. And my job is to maintain the network with new towers and/or upgraded facilities, and that's the reason I'm here this evening. I had the privilege of being here probably about nine months ago, maybe a year ago, when we asked the same board for approval to build a new facility inside of EAA's property, which ended up being a huge success, and the capacity was increased by a massive number. I don't know the exact number, but I know it was increased, because we went basically from about fifty-five feet to about eighty feet, and we added three times the amount of equipment to handle the capacity for the customers and the venue goers. This site that we're talking about tonight just sits to the east of the airport out there, and it will have the same effect. AT&amp;T is interested in funding sites like this so that we can add better capacity for huge events, better for our customers. This particular site, we're increasing our height by about twenty-five feet, and we are also going to increase the amount of equipment on the tower so that the capacity, when you have the larger events happening, EAA were in town, that it will be able to handle those without any issue. In regards to the location, the tower sits on a piece of industrial property, it is surrounded by industrial property and the railroad tracks to the east. So we believe that this is a very good location for a new facility. The tower will be built for multiple carriers, so it's not just being built just for AT&amp;T to use, but if another carrier wants to come along and use that space, there's definitely space on there for at least two more carriers to be able to use. Our permits have been issued, approvals have been issued by the FAA and the FCC, and the only thing that is keeping us from moving forward, obviously, is zoning approval, and then the building permit, and our plan is to have this site operational so that it can support the twenty-twenty-two EAA event. And if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer those for you.
Counsel? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I just had one follow-up question for Mr. Lyons. In the minutes from the plan commission, at the end of that, it looks like you said that if they can provide the documentation for the three criteria that were discussed, then the approval would be recommended. I'm assuming that they already provided that to you?
Correct. Per our ordinance, all the required documentation, affidavits, letters have been provided, we feel they met the ordinance requirements.
Okay, thank you. All right, we need a, let's see here, no, that's on statements. Do we have anyone else registered to speak?
No, we do not.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All right, discussion on consent. All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Next, we'll move on to pending ordinances, eighteen is ordinance twenty-one dash four sixty-three, amend landmarks, commission ordinance to correct code references. Counsel have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion on the ordinance. And this is a second reading for those following along at home. All right, please take the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Number nineteen, ordinance twenty-one dash four sixty-four, amend ordinances for streets to remain open during course of excavation work, to authorize the Director of Public Works to approve closures necessary for emergency work or to allow for safe conditions for workers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Actually, Mr. Robbie, if you wouldn't mind coming on up, I didn't give you a heads-up on this one, but I'm pretty sure you can handle it. Just for those at home, what we're doing, normally these are pretty pro forma, we have emergency road closure, you come to us, we give our blessing. Most of the time, it's going to start pretty fast anyways, even if we didn't give our blessing, but we're giving you the authority to do so without it coming to us. That's, in a nutshell, that's what we're doing here, so that you guys can move fast and efficient with our contractors to repair things as needed, right?
It's not only our contractors, but it's also, you know, private situations, you know. We had a situation earlier this year where a plumber was working on a private sewer lateral, and, you know, they had a situation on one of those streets in the code that says you can't close it, and, you know, so we've had a few emergency declarations, we've had to declare through the Board of Public Works to authorize those closures, whereas making this change in the ordinance would give us the ability to handle this change in the ordinance would give us the ability to handle that administratively in conjunction with, in consultation with the chiefs to ensure that emergency services can still be provided.
Perfect. Appreciate the explanation for those at home, and just wanted to just have that on the record, so I appreciate it.
Other counsel questions? All right, please take the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower. Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Item number 20, ordinance 21-465, amend ordinance 25-104.2 to provide administrative process variances for unusual conditions to be granted from the city's access control ordinance with appeal to Plan Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All right, discussion. Mr. Lyons, would you like to reinterpret that?
Yeah, so, over the last several years, a lot of our redevelopment projects have necessitated a large amount of access control variances, and those go through the Plan Commission and typically have always been approved. You know, we work closely between planning and public works to determine the appropriate curb cut locations, size, spacing, all of that. So over the years, we've kind of started to work out a process where these are being routinely approved because we're making the best of the situations we can. So departments discussing it, discussing with Attorney's Office. We felt that it was better serve the citizens of Oshkosh and Development in Oshkosh by making them an administrative approval when appropriate, and when an appropriate situation cannot be determined, then taking it through to the Plan Commission. So this is just really a goal to kind of speed up the process.
Now, would this apply to both residential and commercial?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
So, this would also waive the, or would take away the $100 fee that an applicant has to pay to ask for this?
Correct.
And reduce the time it takes to get one of these approved.
This would remove that additional application fee for an access control variance during the process.
Okay, so it's cheaper and more efficient for the applicant?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification and detail. All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next, we have item number 21, ordinance 21-466, amend building ordinance to correct administrative code reference. I have a motion and a second on that.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sounds like some housekeeping reference. All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Carried seven.
All right, our last pending ordinance is number 22, ordinance 21-467, amend ordinance for marijuana possession penalties for adults.
So moved.
Second.
Any council members, Councilmember Ford?
Suppose I can talk. I don't have much to say on this, I promise. Just thank you for staff and Chief Smith for their work on this. I mean, we've learned a lot throughout this process. We know that possession of small amounts of marijuana has already been decriminalized here. We know we don't give a lot of citations. We know that the ones we do give are related to other criminal activity. Logically, reducing this fine to $75 makes it consistent with our open intoxicant ordinance. The police chief has said on previous occasions that that amount is something that he can work with. Given that, I have no problem supporting this.
All right, other council members? All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Wojciechowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Nope.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Carried 61.
All right, moving on to pending resolution, resolution 21-468, approve 2022 to 2026 capital improvement plan.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Ross, I know you got a new Cadillac in here, I just can't find it.
Counselmember Ford?
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy to support the CIP. I just want to acknowledge that we've gotten a few emails and requests to move things around from citizens. You know, we've shared that with city staff, and I've thought about that. I think that opening that door at this point is probably a door we don't, we don't want to open because we're late in the process. Our resources are finite. Anything we move up means we have to make a decision to move something else behind or take out more debt, and I think that that would put some of the progress we've made on that front at risk. So appreciate all the public comments, and I'm pleased to support this as it is.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I act with the sentiments of my colleague. You know, for those at home, council gave direction to staff for the 2022 year to bump up our new debt that we take on. For the last several years, at least while I've been on council, we've been around the 12, 12.5 to 14-ish million in terms of new debt. We're at a point where it's advantageous for us to potentially take on a little bit more due to the conditions that present itself. Interest rates are very, very low, and that makes it economically feasible and prudent to potentially speed up a few projects, and so that's what we've done here. I'm happy with the work that staff has done to prepare this, and I appreciate their efforts, so I'll be supporting as well.
I just have a question for Mr. Van Gompo or Mr. Roloff. So there are some items that were a discussion that relate to 2.4 million of ARPA funds being committed in this process by moving some things around, and just would like to hear from you on the fact that council hasn't really weighed in on that yet, and whether or not we're going to be committing things before council has weighed in as we're approving this budget. If you could speak to that.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I too wanted to mention those items because I think it's worth calling out. When I sat down and discussed how we might tackle the desires of city council and looking at the projects that should be funded by debt, let me just take a quick step backwards. Again, we're asking for your adoption of a plan, and we're not committing to any funding. So keep that in mind during your discussions. But the $2.4 million includes projects that initially were in the plan but to be determined, and initially we rolled them into a potential borrowing issue. But in working and looking at the projects that were included, as a finance director, I did not feel comfortable recommending them to be financed by debt, and I can talk about the specific projects, but the radios, Menominee Park Beach House, the Grand Opera House lighting, and Station 19 parking lots, I thought would be better not to be financed by debt. So you are correct. I'm asking for a board to look at that $2.4 million from funding from other sources. My recommendation is that would be included in your discussions with ARPA projects, and you are correct, you know, again, this is a plan. We're not tying to any financing. That'll be done as part of the operating budget. So as a plan, I think it's great that we can move forward with that potential funding source. If that is not the desire of council, we would probably have to look at other sources. Quite frankly, it could be levy, but at this point, I don't think it would be in my best interest to recommend that they be included in a levy for 2022. So I'm asking for your consideration on the plan with this notation noted.
So if those are not recommended, the radios, which it's my understanding are quite needed, and the beach house has been permanently closed for a season in which nobody's been able to use that, and you're not recommending debt, you know, why would they not be financed in that way?
Well, I just think that because of the life of the assets that we're acquiring, I just don't think that it's prudent to use debt financing for that. Now, you could make an argument that the beach house, you know, could be a debt-worthy project, but with the size and scope, I just did not feel it was prudent to recommend that to be included in the debt issuance.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Yeah, in the past, I know you mentioned the police and fire radios have been funded through intergovernmental revenues, and I know that that's been stepping off the table. That's completely off the table this time around. That's still a chance.
It is not completely off the table. Chief Smith and I have talked about this. I've also talked about it with Chief Stanley. In the past, the county has funded some of these for the entire county, and I think that that is still a possibility. That's why, you know, Mr. Van Gompo's memo is like, we recommend doing this, but between now and the time you adopt the budget, we're going to keep pursuing different funding options. The key for, it's interesting, if you look closely at the agenda, the number that Mr. Van Gompo put in for that funding was before I had a conversation with Chief Smith. You look at the ARPA funding summary, it's only, it's down to 1.7 million. If we order by December 15th, we can get a reduction in that cost, and so I certainly want to take advantage of that to save $200,000. And I will come to you with an idea on how to do this because I want that, I want to get that purchase order signed by December 15th so we can save $200,000. So we will pursue every vehicle to get this done. But given the different projects that I think council wanted to prioritize, I think Mr. Van Gompo said, we'll put those in there, but recognize that the radios are still out there, they're still very necessary, but they're needed in every single municipality in this county, so I think there's a possibility for that to happen.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure if Mr. Maurer is here. I don't think so.
It's family night at the Leech, so he is not here.
Oh, I see, I see.
That was his excuse, so I will answer if you have any questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Maurer and I talked.
Yes, and I don't know that I have my page marked well enough to reference a page number. Well, first off, I would just want to say, I know a lot of work went into this CIP. I did notice, as I was going through it, that some of the projects were scored, the CIP project score, but many of them were not. And I know we referenced the scoring in the, I guess, the page three, let's see here, nope, page five, the CIP ranking process. And I had been asked about this, how those things were ranked, and I guess I'd like to get specific on a couple items. With space A and space B out by Ripple, I believe, that there were newer developments were moved up in the CIP ahead of a longstanding, older Central City Park acquisition need. If someone could speak to why those would have been scored at a higher ranking, given that the percentage of population served is one of the ranking criteria, if that's, let me see if I can get that page pulled back up.
Yeah, if you could help me with the page, if I can, but there's a little bit of apples and oranges, so I certainly can help with that.
And I understand that, you know, council has previously had a workshop regarding, you know, parkland dedication with new developments in that, but let's see here. Oh, here we go. On page 14, under Parkland Improvements, section 325, we have Site A development, Ripple in Oregon, and then Site B, Ninth and Clairville, in the 2023. And then the 2025, I believe, or 2026, excuse me, was what was indicated for the Central City Park space, which has been, you know, 10 years known that that was needed and serves a significant portion, 10% roughly, of the city's population.
I'm just aware of what Mr. Maurer gave us from the Parks Board and prior discussion. So the parks out in those areas have been identified. Pickard Estates is one of them, that's the west side, and the fact that there's not a city park there either. So I guess I would turn that back to the Plan Commission or the Parks Board because it's only been in the past couple months that the Central City Park has been raised in priority by the Parks Board.
Well, actually, back in 2010, the Parks Board, in the process of the comprehensive outdoor rec plan, identified sections of the central city for future land acquisition. You're correct in that it didn't make it into the CIP until this year.
Yes, the Parks Board has it identified in the 2010 corp, but it hasn't been prioritized as a project up until this year.
The other item I'd like to address is, I know at the next item on our agenda where we're going to talk about expanding the CIP plan to go out to 2031, but I just wanted to ask if Mr. Robbie would have an opportunity. I know we've talked a little bit about future thinking on electric vehicles and that, and it does appear that our CIP has a couple dozen vehicles that are being replaced, and just wondering, you know, whether or not we're looking ahead at using the potential replacement for electric vehicles on some of these longer-lasting or scheduled replacements.
As we had previously discussed, you know, we would continue to look at that on an annual basis to determine, you know, what options there are and whether those options would successfully meet the needs of the organization or not. So, you know, it is something that when we would prepare specifications to go out for bids, we would evaluate at that time.
And Mr. Robbie, when we talked about this too, you also mentioned, I think, that it's not just the vehicles that, or the potential greenhouse gas emissions or carbon or dollar savings on fuel, that we have to also consider the infrastructure, the charging stations, and folks that can repair and work on these items, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. We currently do not have the infrastructure in place to be able to charge them, and our mechanics currently would not have the training necessary to work on them. So it has to be a bit of a long-term plan to be able to get the infrastructure in place and the training in place before we would really be looking at bringing the first vehicle in.
Certainly, and I know this is not your department, but I do see in here we have, it looks like the first electric buses coming in through transit. Did I read that correctly?
They would probably be hybrid, but, but they're, Mr., it looks like Councilmember or...
Yes, Councilmember Erickson, perhaps you can speak to that.
He probably has better insight there because I know they've discussed it at the Transit Board.
Yeah, I think the new ones that we've, they've been looking at have been hybrid, so just making sure that they can function properly in the winter and all of that, but that's been kind of the direction, it seems.
Yeah. But I've had discussions regularly with departments. Mr. Robbie and some of his staff like to tease me because about 10 years ago, we experimented with natural gas, CNG vehicles, and, you know, we made a little bit of investment. Fortunately, we didn't make a huge investment, but that experiment didn't work out real well. But we continue to evaluate, even to this day, because we do, we have a great relationship with QuickTrip in terms of purchasing CNG from them. That's been working well, but performance issues were challenged, so we're going to continue to look at those issues. You forwarded me one on Teslas. I'm not sure if the officers are interested in cool-looking Teslas. I'm not going to ask our officer here to comment, but there, I think as we go on, especially when we get into the five-year, the technology is improving every single year, and we're getting closer to the day that this is going to happen, and I think James and his staff are going to keep evaluating that.
Right.
And I guess I'd just like to, you know, share with folks who are watching here that have given inputs, appreciate all of the work and the meetings by neighbors and citizens. citizens and, and of our boards and commissions. You know, it is a tough choice when we get down to the wire here on, on these decisions, and the priorities can be shaped by citizens' inputs, and certainly, we appreciate that input, and there is still time for us to, you know, look at over the next couple of years, how things shake out. I think many of us are waiting with bated breath to see what the infrastructure package is coming forward, and who knows what that will be at this point, but in any event, thank you, appreciate it. All right, any other questions or comments, or we call the roll, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Bojehowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Ugror.
Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Karieth Seven.
All right, next we are at Resolution 21, new Resolution 21 of 469, expand capital improvement plan to include 2027 to 2031 public works projects. This is our first reading, City Attorney, do, do we take
It's a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not an ordinance.
Not an ordinance. Yes, public works projects, so take a motion in a second.
I'm moved.
Second.
End discussion. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. James, or Mr. Robby, apologize. If you want to explain for those at home why we're doing this, I think it's a matter of some better planning for us in terms of funding sources sometimes, as well as, you know, we can give the, the people at home a glimpse as to what's on the horizon a little farther out, because those are always what's, what's coming up next in the next two, three, four years, so if you want to.
Yeah, the biggest reason for this is, you know, the mayor mentioned a federal infrastructure package hopefully coming at some point in time, but even some of our regular programs through the State Department of Transportation, you know, right now, we're in the process of applying for projects that, if funded, are currently outside of our five-year plan, they're out in years six and seven. Historically, what we've done is we've piled all of those five years, those second five years worth of projects into year five of the CIP, because one of the questions on those applications is, is this project in an approved plan? So, we've always piled onto year five. Well, that can be confusing to our residents, because they look at the plan and say, well, you know, five years ago, my street was in your plan and you still haven't done it. Well, that's because we had five years' worth of projects in year five of the plan back then. So, what we have been doing for the last several years is a second five-year, year six through 10, of planning for the utilities to help with our rate analyses, but this year, you know, as I mentioned at some of our workshops, we would be asking for this year six through 10 approval from the council to help facilitate our applications for funding.
Appreciate the explanation. This is, this is good work on, on your guys' part in terms of just the foresight and trying to look forward enough, one, to help us with possible funding that could come from, you know, our state and federal partners, but also just in terms of, you know, making it a little bit clearer for those at home when they're, when they're looking at projects and they're seeing things in the CIP, so they have a, a better understanding of when it actually may occur, instead of the infamous, you know, like you said, lumping it all in year five. So, I appreciate the work on this one, this is, this is a good one for us.
Thank you, and one of the things we're currently working with, Engineering Division is working with their GIS staff to get a second interactive map published on the website to include this year's six through 10 projects. As of right now, we don't have it, we're kind of trying to fit it in with a few other projects that they have going on. We're hopeful that within the next week or so, we'll have that second map out on the CIP webpage as well, so that people can, you know, kind of see and interact with it and kind of get a better feel for when things are coming.
And certainly, this would, this longer view would also enable some of our greenhouse gas emission, carbon reduction targets that are in, I think, our 2007 agreement with the Paris Climate, as well as our sustainability plan in, in planning for some of the infrastructure to support some of those endeavors, correct?
Haven't gotten that far to including all of that yet. My main push was getting the construction project, because that was where I was focusing funding, but certainly, as we continue to progress in coming years, certainly, we'll be looking to, you know, flush out those years more in the future. There's kind of a rush for staff when I directed them, this year, you're going to put year six through 10 completely together for construction, so I'm kind of building it out a little bit more, so it might take us another year or two to get it fully fleshed out, but those will be things we'll keep looking at.
Thank you. All right, please call the roll.
Hanson.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Bojehowski.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Ford.
Aye.
Ugror.
Aye.
Hall Mary.
Aye.
Karieth Seven.
All right, we are at council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. Future meetings we have, discussion of virtual meetings. Folks, what are we thinking for a virtual meeting extension, or, I'm, I'm sorry, continuing to meet in person and giving Mr. Rollup how we are feeling about virtual meetings at this point. Councilmember Ford?
I think it's working just fine, meeting in person, and I think we should continue to do so.
Agreed, as is, is working just fine, in my opinion.
And I guess I just had one question, and I'm okay with the in-person, are we able to promptly rearrange if we anticipate a larger group on a particular topic as far as the layout?
We can certainly do that. You know, we, we try to be as flexible as we can, a couple weeks ago, we, a few weeks ago, we moved over to the Convention Center. In retrospect, that may have been considered overkill, and I certainly acknowledge that. We're going to try to keep our, you know, our ears and eyes open as much as possible, so that if we anticipate something, do we need to move it completely off-site, or do we, I think the mayor is probably referring to the larger you that we had had earlier, and if we anticipate a crowd, that would push the audience actually into 404, and then I would have staff, if there's insufficient room to use, actually my office as their waiting area, so that the public could do that. So, those are the various things we're going to, you know, certainly keep in mind. I'm really just crossing my fingers, because we have one more meeting in September before the mask requirement in the building is lifted, so we'll, we'll work on that and
I'm assuming that's based on what the conditions are at that time.
We're, yeah, we're just, we're continuing to look at what CDC's saying, and right now, they're still, they're, they haven't changed their, their guidelines as of, now.
And then, if council or staff need to have a special accommodation and pre, would, would wish to have a virtual attendance, are we in a position to accommodate that?
For the council meetings, the council's already given us that ability to do that, so if anybody tonight had wanted to participate virtually, they could have. We offered that in a couple instances and didn't need to do that, so we, we have our collection of staff and department heads in the back, so we're, we're doing okay, but we're going to accommodate those. I believe there was a staff member at a meeting or two before, so we do it if, if we need to do it to accommodate them.
All right. Next is the joint workshop with Landmark's Commission Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee and Advisory Parks Board regarding the Chief Oshkosh Monument, that's coming up on Monday afternoon, I believe at 2:00 PM.
2:00 PM, and it has been noticed, Madam Mayor, and I apologize
Yes, unfortunately.
For the mix-up.
That was coming in on the, or the beginning of that holiday weekend, and it sounds like there were some signals crossed, but unfortunate, but hopefully, folks will be able to make this, that wish to be part of that. And then, we have, again, third and fourth budget workshops, October 18th and 19th. Full days, guys, 8:30, right?
Eight.
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 I hope, I hope I'm not late.
4:30.
All right, and then council member announcements and statements regarding board and commissions. Councilmember Miller?
Thank you, Mayor. CVB, Amy gave me my punch list here, she bosses me around a lot, she likes that, but for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the RFP for the rebranding is going out this week, six agencies will begin bidding on that process. We received the final report from Roger Brooks' assessment, we'll be using that research in rebranding and talking with stakeholder groups to work through the findings. CVB is also hiring a new staff, first, a community partnership coordinator, to provide intentional, strong, intentionally strong link between the CVB and our community partners to evaluate tourism here in the city. So, there you go, Amy, my boss, I hit it all for you.
All right, Councilmember Ford?
Yes, the Committee on Aging met, and we voted to keep meeting in person, but more important, I just want to share that the Senior Expo is returning this year, Tuesday, October 5th, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at the Convention Center.
Councilmember Hanson?
I met with the Traffic and Parking Advisory Board, and we will be removing the no left turn on New York and Jackson intersection. That is a pretty busy intersection, but now with the restriping, it has helped everything, and we will be able to take that away.
Okay, so just when you thought you were used to that, it's changing again, but seems to be working so far with, with speed and noise from what I'm hearing from neighbors and traveling down that street.
A lot of people don't like it, I've had a lot of people reach out and say they're not exactly happy with it, but overall, from what I've seen, I drive it every day, multiple times a day, it, it helps with turning, it helps with pulling big trailers, and sucks if you have to drive a little slower, sorry, guys.
All right, I'll just give a brief update from Parks Advisory Board. We had a couple of items last night, one was regarding some memorial plaques and a liberty elm tree proposed and passed, as well as, I'm happy to announce, for those of you who are 55 or better, we did recommend a $5 reduction in the fee for seniors, which will, of course, be coming to council, and the Four Seasons Building is making progress as well. Looks like we had a dozen memorial trees planted this year, and those were grant-funded. They're still heavily working on the Emerald Ash Borer and the ash tree removal issue, so that's all I have to report for parks. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few things in your packet. First one is the memo regarding an agreement with Short Kelly Hendrickson, SEH, for the needs assessment for the fire department's facility study. That's been a long outstanding issue, so making progress on that to get SEH in here and assist with that. Speaking of Jackson Street, the next phase with this corridor is the vehicle detection camera systems for that plan in the Murdock-Wisconsin intersection, so you'll see those very shortly, we just authorized the cooperative purchase for those. The, I'm happy to report that with the Business Improvement District, we've worked with them to create a pilot program to do utility wraps, or to do wraps around utility boxes. Think of how we do the wraps around the buses, it's just a much smaller version, it's not commercial, it's more, it's going to be historical photographs that will be, you know, put in a plastic screening and put around the utility boxes. We're going to try something downtown for this year and see how they work, if they work long-term, we might, might keep going with that, so we're excited to, to give that a shot. I think it'll, it'll certainly spruce up a rather dull utility box, so.
Just a quick question on that, I noticed when I was reading about it, they have to remove them after a year, why would that be? Is they, do they degrade?
It's the condition that we put on it for a pilot program, I'm certainly willing to take a look at it after a year to see if, how they're doing. If they don't get maintained or poor quality, it's like, okay, the project's over. If the things are good, not only would I like to keep them there, I'd like to expand them in elsewhere in the city, so cross your fingers that we don't have to go there, because that's really my hope. The, the council may recall that when we switched over to our workers' comp insurance for League Mutual Insurance, that we were provided a service called Rebound. We are required to renew that every year, so we've renewed that with the League, and we get fully reimbursed by the League's Workers' Comp Insurance Program for that, and what that does is it enables our employees, if they are involved in an injury, particularly one at work, they can call up, and this group facilitates getting them to, to get their problem fixed, they can give them priorities for appointments, they really do a great job. I ended up at the League meeting last night, I sat with two of the folks from Rebound, and really excited about what services they can provide to get our folks back to work as soon as possible and as safely as possible, so.
Is this anything like buying a block of hotel rooms, and you get to, like, move up in the, in the priority list because of certain reservations?
They keep track of open spaces, so that if I was injured at work and hurt my shoulder, and there happens to be, and they're keeping an eye on that, so they might say, Mark so-and-so has an appointment, they can get you in tomorrow, rather than, well, you got to wait two weeks to go see somebody. So, kind of like that, that's a good, it's probably a pretty good analogy.
So, I guess, help me understand this, because I must have not been paying attention when you talked about this. So, how is this something that you couldn't call the provider yourself and find out?
This group works closely with, with these folks, they have a relationship with them. You call them cold, I just got hurt today, they're not going to get, you're not going to get the same attention. These folks work very closely with the, with these, these medical providers to get this done.
Concierge.
The, the feedback I'm getting has been outstanding.
All right.
So, now for our main event. On Friday, provided council with a summary of our projects that we had received, either an application, or a suggestion, or prioritized by staff, that's a variety of sheets you see there, but the, I guess the drumroll summary for everybody was that, and the mayor pointed out, I, that at my city managers' report show, I, it said $60 million, but I neglected to include some numbers that included ranges, and when Diane was putting it together, I took a quick look at it and didn't see that if there was a range, she was going to, she asked me, which one do you want to put in? So, she asked me that on Friday, which number do you want to put in? That added $30 million when you added those ranges in. There was one application that we had, that had been misplaced, we found, but that was only 300,000, so it was, bulk of it was these ranges, so you can see that there was a great deal of interest expressed. The summary itself, I really appreciate the input that we received, we got some great input from neighborhood associations over $2.4 million. The nonprofit entities, $9,349,000 from various nonprofit entities throughout the community. Board and commission recommendations were at 18 million. As I looked at those, there's a little bit of overlap and duplication, so it's probably not all 92 million, because, for example, I think the Plan Commission had put something in about one of the parks, and so, and that was submitted by the departments already, so that gives you a rough idea. Lost revenue recovery, Mr. Van Gompel had reported at the, the previous, I think, budget workshop, that the estimate for lost revenue is about 10.2 million, of which, that, just so everybody understands, that's only estimated through the end of 2020. So, revenue that we've lost this year and ongoing, that we still have to keep tracking, so there's a little caveat with that one. The one that I think people most relate to is room tax, and Amy Albright and I have had many discussions on this issue, and you know, the concern is that the convention business isn't going to fully return for a while, so we could see that lost revenue continue well into 2024. So, even though Mr. Van Gompel has followed all the guidelines that the feds have laid out for estimating lost revenue, it's only through 2020. So, at the end of the year, he'll do a similar run for the '21, and we'll keep doing that, so that just gives you a rough idea. I think it also points out the need to, we can be very deliberate in terms of what we do with these funds, because there's 92 million and more to come, so by the time we're done, So it gives you a very good perspective on that. And then last but not least, we took a number of our capital improvement projects and said, if we could replace funding for borrowing or other sources, that's $52 million. That is not all of our capital improvement programs. I asked departments to kind of slice off the top, the ones that they felt, you know, had the, either had a chance of not getting funded without ARPA, or would be a very long time, or represent some opportunities that council may want to wish to look at. You'll see that some are projects that are actually this year, so I dig a little deep with the CIP, only because there's a lot of projects there. But we included projects for this year. We did that on purpose to let you know, you could still do that. But we've, you know, we've already planned those projects, we budgeted for those already. Again, that's up to you. We can move some things around to free up some funds. You'll see that I put in the notes section, because there was a question, well, the federal rules say you can only use it for water, sewer, infrastructure. That is correct, but recovered revenue could be used as a replacement for these. So you see, there's a lot of capital improvements. With each of these, I identified some short-term and long-term goals that I had provided council back in April. Those are still there. I would encourage you not to get into a debate with me about these, because quite honestly, your points are just as valid as what I put there on paper. So I would concede, if you said, well, I think this does meet a long-term goal, then you didn't mark up, you're probably right. So I'm certainly not going to argue with that. As I said previously, I think you'll be able to identify, if there's a project that you have a certain passion for, you can make an argument for that with any of the criteria, because we have so many different criteria. And these are in the CIP for a reason, and they wouldn't be in here if they didn't have a need for it. And you could certainly add projects. Mayor and I just talked earlier about a project that wasn't somewhere. That's, ultimately, that's going to be your recommendation, your decision based on our recommendation. You'll see a variety of projects that are in here. I guess where I'm, I'm not necessarily looking for any direction tonight, it was really just to give you an overview, start the discussion. Eventually, there may be value to saying, where do we want to allocate a given amount of money or percentage of funds to certain areas? Probably the most important recommendation is, don't spend it all in one place, because of like what I said with lost revenue. I think there are still things that we haven't seen yet. You know, this whole thing with evictions. What's going on with that? How negatively impacted will we see with that? I would suggest holding back a good deal of this money, as much as a quarter to a third to not allocate it at all. And others, I would say, I'd hold a bunch in reserve. You may say, I want to do something with, say, eviction prevention. We don't need to spend it now, but we can set it aside for now. And those are the types of things, because I think you may find your need to reprioritize some of this stuff as you go on. And to commit to it and then pull it back, that won't look good. So with that, I leave it to you. I know Mr. Ford had some ideas that he wanted to share, but it wasn't intended to be, you know, vote on or anything. I think he just, he had some random thoughts, yeah, and I welcome, you know, Mr. Ford printed his, but any thoughts or reactions, I certainly appreciate any input you have.
Just a question, Mr. Rolfe. On the most recent memo that we received with some of those summaries, I was also looking at the citizen input sheet that was there, and I'm wondering if that just refers to the citizen individual, like, applications that were submitted? Because we also had this August 5th American Rescue Plan Act Community Input Survey, and so the tally that I was going through in those remarks don't seem to be reflected in here. And so I'm just trying to understand, at what point this will coalesce between the two, and whether or not I think folks are waiting to see also if there will be yet another round of public input opportunity.
What I would say is that you are correct, that the summary for the citizen input here are just things that we were either emailed or mailed to us. The Polco survey you received previously is totally separate from that. I don't mean to, I figured you already had it, and we didn't quantify any of those, because I thought, it was, quite honestly, it was difficult to quantify a citizen request. If it was an organization that was making a request, those are in all of the section that says nonprofit. And I would think that as council is making allocations, you probably want to have, you know, certainly welcome public input at the meetings. I will say that the public input sessions were poorly attended. Am I being generous with that statement? But I think, once things are out on the table, I think you're going to see more input, because people love to respond to something that's right in front of them, rather than kind of open-ended. But we got some good results from Polco. There's nothing wrong with that, but some were contradictory with one another. And that's, when they're contradictory, they kind of get tossed onto the deus and said, all right, council, somebody said, whatever you do, do water and sewer. Whatever you do, don't do water and sewer.
Well, I just say from my tally, no surprise here from that Polco survey, that we had predominantly unifying themes around streets, water quality, or stormwater, floodwater control, parks, bike and ped. Broadband was a high one, although I did see in the governor's budget, and we've seen other things coming up about broadband opportunities, too. And then direct assistance to either households or businesses was kind of lagging towards the end. But folks were pretty consistent with much of our former citizen surveys, I think, with streets, but it was a little bit surprising to see water, parks, and then bike and ped kind of move into the top four, top five.
Mind if I weigh in quick?
Oh, certainly.
Yeah, so with the public, I pass around worksheets, because I'm a big fan of the paper industry in the Valley here.
That's because you professors have a lot of spare time, right?
That's what we do, right? Yeah, we work six hours a week. It's tough.
What do they call those, teaching assistants?
Yeah, my dad asked me that. He's, I was assistant professor, he said, who do you assist? I'm like, it's a real job. Anyways, I digress. What I passed around here was just some thoughts I had, just as a starting point, about us having a guiding philosophy for the distribution of these funds, really from a policy side. I think operationally, we could get, we could get really deep into the weeds with the city, talking about specific projects. I don't think that's necessarily going to be a very productive route for us to go as a council. I think it would be more productive for us to set some general parameters about what our expectations are for distributing this money, so that the community, the council, city staffs, all on the same page, and then we kind of react to what the city brings us from there. So I stress, this is just me sitting at a keyboard, so it's not a, nothing set in stone, obviously. But a couple of things that I just want to point out quickly, that I think are worthwhile for our guiding philosophy, is that we prioritize infrastructure projects that are already scored in our CIP. I think that they've already gone through a legitimized process, and I think there's value to that. Next priority would be these allowable projects and programming that came through our public input process. That'll be a little more tricky to sort out, but obviously is important. I ask that we give special consideration to projects that are in census tracts that are most impacted by COVID-19, and then obviously give consideration to minimizing conflict and overlapping projects, so we get the most bang for our buck. I think more specifically, in terms of parameters, I want to make sure we don't, we don't create any new programs with ongoing expenses, because we don't want to, all right, we want to leverage these funds, not create long-term liabilities. Same deal, that we don't create structural deficits with any of our new spending. Consider maintenance costs when we do invest in infrastructure, just like we do when we do the CIP, but want to make sure we continue to do that with our, with our ARPA funds. As the city manager said, makes sense to spread this out through 2024, considering this is going to be a long-term recovery, if we are even in a recovery phase at this point. And then probably the one that would merit the most discussion, and it doesn't have to be tonight, but something to think about, is how do we, how do we decide how much we spend on infrastructure, as opposed to the citizen input programming and the nonprofit requests, et cetera? I think it makes sense to try to make, at least logically, make this money work for us. So my general kind of thought is that we take a look at, you know, how much of our infrastructure costs that we would be spending debt on, can we use ARPA money for? And how much interest would that free up? In other words, what type of things can we fund with this ARPA money that we no longer have to fund through debt? And what would those savings be? And just back of the envelope, it would translate into the $14, $15 million infrastructure, $5 or $6 million programming, and direct assistance split. It's not perfect. At some level, these are all going to be arbitrary splits, but I think at the very least, there's a logic to that. So obviously, welcome all input, but those are my initial thoughts, and I appreciate you all entertaining them.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Erickson.
Sorry, thank you. I appreciate the time that you took to put this together, Councilmember Ford. One piece, and maybe this falls under that third bullet point that you have under the priority for ARPA funds, but I think one thing I would like us to consider incorporating is a priority of equity, just like we have as one of the guiding principles within the strategic plan. You know, we've asked departments to do this with the DEI committee. I think this might be something that we could practice doing as a council, too. So maybe, you know, if this is an opportunity for the DEI committee to inform, you know, a priority that would follow equity, how funding can help those most impacted by COVID. So, consideration.
And I'd just like to share a couple of the best practices that came from the league discussion on this last week. Tony, is it Herkert or Keekert?
Herkert.
Herkert. Their new government affairs gave a great presentation on the eligible uses. I think we're all getting pretty familiar with the eligible uses, but then went into some of the best practices, and there's a, you know, a significant emphasis on equity and qualified census tracts, of which Oshkosh does have two qualified census tracts. And then, you know, data-based, and in terms of, you know, making those decisions, and collaborative efforts where you can, of course. I think we all think that one's, you know, somewhat obvious, but the, I guess, some of the questions that came out of that presentation, too, were, well, you know, what communities are waiting to see what the infrastructure package is before they decide how much of their ARPA dollars to commit to infrastructure or CIP-type things? And so I thought that was interesting, and, you know, the kind of straw poll was, some are just going full steam ahead, and regardless of what happens with the infrastructure package, and others are like, maybe we want to hold back. And so appreciate the, while it's really difficult to be patient, it's also important that I think the emergent recovery or rescue part of this, for those emergent items, are in our minds, as well as the future generation long-term. So appreciate council's thoughtfulness on this, and certainly Mr. Ford for sharing some of these details.
If I could add, if I could add just one thing in response, or maybe not in response, more to supplement what the mayor's already said, the collaboration part is probably something we really need to keep an eye on. We just got something from Governor Eaver's office last week, that talked about a $250 million grant program, of which $200 million is for what's called a Neighborhood Investment Fund Grant Program. And equity issues are listed specifically in there. I would like to make sure that if there's any, if they're looking for collaboration or matching funds, that we, and I use this term a lot, keep our powder dry for some other opportunities to say, well, we could do this or that. Ms. Nyforth brought this to my attention and threw out some ideas that immediately were like, totally correct. I mean, those are things, so we got to keep our eyes open for exactly the things that we've been talking about here, so.
And just one other thing to add to that, and that was, you know, a recommendation, too, that, you know, it's tempting to say, oh, this is mine, you know, my precious, but, you know, also looking at some of the regional collaboration opportunities as well, so.
Yeah. I'll forward you the governor's memo, so everybody has equal access to it. That's all I have on that one. Let me, I got a lot of open files here, so bear with me, please.
You're at outstanding issues.
I'm at outstanding issues, yeah, so I just had to get to that one. So, you know, we have the outstanding issues, obviously, certainly happy to answer questions. The first one is the item on the agenda for the fire department facility study that I mentioned just a moment ago. Happy about that. And the, the goals for the third quarter goal update will be forthcoming, not the next meeting, but the meeting after that. And certainly happy, and council had asked, we have the tourism assessment. So as Mr. Miller pointed out, Ms. Albright from the Convention and Visitor just got the final, final report from Mr. Brooks. So Ms. Nyforth and Ms. Albright are working to make sure we're identifying our role in all of those, because there's some things that don't have anything to do with the city, some that are marginally due to us, and some that are directly due to us. Wrapping the utility boxes is just one example that was there. So we're going to be at the table at the appropriate times, and I know that Ms. Albright and Ms. Nyforth are going to pretty much have regular conversations. Amy's going to be creating a group, sort of a stakeholder group, and Ms. Nyforth is going to be our representative.
I just wanted to ask a question about that line there, the last line there, and that is, you know, once roles are identified, that it will be shared with council, and staff works with the steering committee, but the city will have a role in supporting CVB's initiative?
Yeah.
Tell me more on that, what that means.
What I think, what that means is, as we're going to be moving, if they make an observation about something we need to do, I want to be there to make sure that we're going to assist in that. If it has a financial impact, it's going to come back to the council, obviously, but if it's a regulatory thing, one of the issues that was talked about, for example, were the hanging, the blade signs.
The sign blade, yeah. That's like 10 years, 15 years going on now, right?
I think Kelly's been working on that actively already, so those are things that we'll probably just report out, because they, they don't, the council already approved the blade sign ordinance 10 years ago. Nobody's taken advantage of it. So we're trying to figure out ways to make people aware of it and try to make it as easy as possible. So things like that, that's where we're going to have a role.
Just a question, too, then. Looks like for our next council meeting, we'll be having a discussion on the special assessments once again, and then the, do you think we'll be ready to have the discussion about the lifeline rates on the application for PSC for water? I mean, I know these dates kind of move around on here.
Yeah, the dates move around, or just to keep us honest on those things, looks like Mr. Van Gompo's going to comment on the lifeline rates, because that has to do with the overall water rates. But Mr. Mazanik from R.A. Smith is scheduled to be here on the 28th to make a presentation about what we found so far, and then what the next steps are.
Is that going to be a workshop or a presentation? Because a presentation doesn't really.
It's going to be a presentation. I thought it was the 28th, no?
He's going to.
Oh, I thought he had the conflict tonight. Okay, we have a conflict on the 28th, I'm sorry. So it'll be the meeting after, I apologize for that, my misunderstanding. But the idea is, we want to have a presentation from Mr. Mazanik to describe what we found so far and what potential rates might be.
Would council, since this has been delayed a couple of times, be able to get the presentation in advance, so that we can at least start forming some of our questions and?
I don't see any reason why we can't do that.
Great, thank you.
Especially since I thought, since he has a conflict, that tells me that he's going to have the report, he just won't be able to talk to you about it.
Right.
So we'll get it to you as soon as we can. Russ, as far as.
Did you want me to give you a quick update on lifeline rates? Right now, elders and associates is looking at the water rate structure, but it's, Ms. Madam Mayor, it's on hold right now because of the whole situation with the Clearwell projects, and the PSC has to give approval for the construction, and we need that approval for the construction before we can include it in the rate base. So we're just working on the timing issue of when that project might be presented as a potential construction project that has to go down to the PSC for their approval before we can include it in the rate structure analysis.
Oh.
analysis. So right now.
I was under the impression last year that if the rates were going to increase, that's when we could put it in the application. But we haven't even had a chance to even look to see what it would be or do.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing with the Public Service Commission, but my understanding is if we want to include a major capital project like that, we have to go through the construction approval process with the PSC before we can do it and include it as part of our rate base application.
I see. Okay.
And at this time, I have no COVID-19 update. So that's all my reports for tonight. Thank you.
It does look like, based on what I read this week from the Winnebago County Health Department, that the city was in the 40-some percent rate for fully vaccinated. Does that sound about right? Councilmember Erickson, hate to put you on the spot. So we're somewhat behind the rest of the Fox, the county and the Fox cities as well as the state. Folks, there's still opportunities out there to get your vaccination. And I believe the $100 incentive was extended, if I'm not mistaken. Sunny View testing is available widely. So there's the PSA for tonight on COVID. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.